Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 24th Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, move on to the roll call members. Matt, quick roll, please.
Mike Kincaid.
President.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Sandra Jasonowski.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Here.
John Copeland.
Here.
Sierra Messenger.
Present.
Robert Hawkins.
Here.
Thank you.
All righty, and move on to approval minutes. We have a couple dates, I believe?
I do, but before I do that, I just sent these out today. And so I don't know if anybody has had a chance to look at them. No, no.
Hold on, next meeting then?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll hold them.
They said as three today, but it was late.
That's fine. I know, you're playing catch-up on it. You're all good, so. All righty, the first item, we do have a proclamation tonight, so I invite Matt Wilson up and also Cassie Frazier up there. As has been our tradition, every April, we declare the month to be National Child Abuse Awareness Month here in Lebanon. So I do want to read the proclamation and then present that to Matt and Cassie. City of Lebanon, Indiana proclamation, whereas city Lebanon and local agencies serving children and families in our community share the important goal of protecting children and preventing child abuse and neglect before it occurs. And whereas prevention begins with authentic and meaningful collaboration among parents and caregivers, educators, faith communities, family service providers, law enforcement agencies, and community leaders working together to create comprehensive systems in which all families can thrive. And whereas we recognize that families are strongest when policies and programs in a community help them meet their basic needs for food, safe housing, transportation, childcare, healthcare, and employment. And whereas we dedicate ourselves to safety and well-being of children, equipping parents with resources and support to help them parent effectively. And whereas we express our appreciation to professionals who intervene with grace and care in situations where children find themselves in harm's way, so that healing and restoration can begin. And whereas we commit ourselves to fully providing, or fully, we commit ourselves fully to providing safe and sustainable environments for children to grow, develop, and learn. Now therefore, I am at entry. By virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Lebanon, Indiana and state of Indiana, do hereby proclaim the month of April to be National Child Abuse Awareness Month in Lebanon, Indiana, and urge all residents to help us work together toward improving the quality of life for all children and families. Thank you so much. City?
I will just say, as the president of Prevent Child Abuse Boone County, I thank you once again, mayor and council, for issuing this proclamation. We know that we can count on you every year in, year out, to recognize the importance of this month. And we, as a team, are just committed to, and we hope that the community as a whole is committed to providing a safe, empowering community for our young people to grow up in, so that they do not have to deal with the challenges and the horrors of abuse that we have seen far too often. So, thank you.
I also want to say thank you on behalf of Sylvia's Child Advocacy Center. We are coming up on some very important dates this year. This is our 15th year in existence. And on April 22nd, we will have our breakfast at Holiday Farms in Zionsville to celebrate our 15th anniversary. I would like to encourage people to come to that breakfast as we are having a speaker. Her name is Alicia Kozak. She is a survivor of human trafficking. She was abducted when she was 13, and she was kept for two years. The FBI did recover her and save her, and she's going to come speak about how easily that happens and how quickly that happens. So you have some perspective. We see about 180 kids per year, and our trafficking numbers are beginning to increase each year. Trafficking can be anything from just exploitation, meaning somebody met somebody on the internet, and they are asking for pictures or favors, and they are trading those things for money. And these are our children, and these are our Boone County children that this is happening to. So I appreciate you guys recognizing this month and continuing to support us as we move forward. Thank you.
Hey, Cassie, if someone wanted to get tickets or a table, how would they do that?
You could go to our website, www.sylviascac.org, and the tables and the tickets are online right there.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for all the work you guys do for our community. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll go on to old business. There's nothing on my agenda for old business. Anything from the council?
No, sir.
Okay, new business then. First item up here is a food and beverage request from the Lebanon High School Post-Prom Committee, Kathryn Pollack.
Hello. My name is Kathryn Pollack, and I'm joined here by Lori Frost, who is also a member of the Lebanon Post-Prom Committee. We have recently submitted a request to the Food and Beverage Committee on behalf of the post-prom. We are requesting funds to help cover the cost of food and refreshments at our post-prom event on April 26, 2025, from approximately 10:30 PM to 2:30 AM. The Lebanon High School post-prom has existed for decades at Lebanon High School in an effort to keep children who attend the prom very safe. Post-prom accomplishes this by providing entertaining activities, food, and fun as an alternative to the less appealing choices that we know kids can often make, or I should say are at risk of making, if not offered, alternatives. So we like to provide that alternative for them. Post-prom is led by a committee of parents, who are background-checked, and who help plan, organize, and put on the event. According to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, one in three children under the age of 21 who die in alcohol-related accidents die during prom and graduation season. Therefore, prom night has the potential of being a risky night in the life of a teen. Post-prom counteracts this risk by appealing to students with a fun, vibrant atmosphere, providing such activities this year and in years past, such as inflatables, games, prize drawings, karaoke, casino-style games, live entertainment, and much, much more. In addition, we provide opportunities for our students to learn about the dangers of drinking and driving through utilization of the Drunk Goggles course, which you may have heard of. So drunk goggles simulate what it would be like to experience impaired driving, and it helps them understand what that effect is on their perception while wearing the goggles. This is done by the students placing the goggles on and attempting to navigate an indoor course on a trike. This year, Lebanon's post-prom theme will be the Great Campout, and no, there will not be an actual overnight campout. All decor, food, prizes, games, et cetera, will be themed around that theme. So if provided by the city of Lebanon Food and Beverage Committee, funds will be used to help purchase the food and refreshments for the event, which will help offset other costs related to the event, including the items I referenced earlier, the entertainment, inflatables, decor, and so on and so forth. Again, all of this is done in an effort to create a welcoming, fun atmosphere that will draw students to the event and encourage them to make this safer choice over other less safe alternatives. This isn't an event students purchase tickets for, but the cost of the tickets unfortunately does not cover the total cost of the event, so we do seek our sponsors and donors to do that. So, thank you. And if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions for Kathryn? Food and Beverage Committee report?
Sure. We met with them, the Food and Beverage Committee met with them, and we have, we agree that we recommend that we do fund this project with the Food and Beverage Committee. Their purpose with these kids, to keep them in until it was 2:30 or 3:00 in the morning, does wonders for these kids not being out on the road and out in the streets having fun, celebrating. They're having a lot of different kind of fun there, a good, healthy fun. So we believe in this firmly for them. Up to 250 kids attended last year, is what they said. And it's sponsored with the parents, and they're, they need a little bit more this year for the food, because they're doing a food truck. And they're having a healthier meal for these kids, because they're busy all day long. And instead of just doing snacks and things like that, they are, they have a food truck coming, and it's triple Bs, and they're going to provide them with a healthier meal, so that it'll be a little more satisfying for them. So we, after meeting with them, we agree that the Food and Beverage Committee should, we recommend that we give them $1,500 from the fund.
Is that a motion, Sandra?
That is. I will make that motion.
So we have a motion to allocate $1,500 to the Food and Beverage Fund for the Lebanon High School post-prom? Is there a second? Second from Mike. All those here say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work keeping our children safe.
Thank you.
Okay, next request up here is from the Fourth of July Executive Committee, John Messenger.
Good evening, John Messenger. I'm here representing the Fourth of July Executive Committee. What I'm asking for is a food and beverage request for $30,000 for our fireworks on the Fourth of July, which is Friday, July 4th this year. And many volunteers we have, but on behalf of them, I get to represent. So are there any questions? Y'all love the fireworks.
John, I mean, I'll say this.
Yeah, we talked about it at budget meetings, I think.
Best Monday we'll have on fire every year, right?
I'm here with my hand out. There we go.
Any questions, concerns? Okay, is there a motion then to approve the request for the Fourth of July Committee's fireworks show?
I'll make a motion. We approve the $30,000 for the Fourth of July fireworks.
Motion from Dick, and second from Keith. All those here say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, thank you, John.
Thank you. And Tanya, I will get the invoice to you, and thank you very much.
All right, and last request here is from Matt Wilson for the Big Run 5K.
Hello again. I am not here as executive director of the Boone County Mining Partnership or the president of Prevent Child Abuse for this request. But this is for the big run, the elementary big run that we began in 2017 at Lebanon, which Shelley West and I started this back, like I said, in 2017, to, as a culmination of the four running clubs at the elementary schools, and to try to draw interest in the cross-country and track programs at Lebanon. And the recruitment has not worked well, but the getting the kids active, engaged, and celebrating the end of their running clubs has been a phenomenal success. And so that is, that is the main thing. We want to continue encouraging kids who are involved in the rain clubs to just be active and be introduced to healthy activity. Back in 2024, the Big Run took place on May 15th. This year, it's on May 14th. But it took place for the first time in Abner Longley Park, and it just so happened that it rained a lot the day before and the morning of. So it was, it was a bit of a soggy and somewhat muddy mess, but the kids had a blast. There was even one young lady who was wheelchair-bound that another, I think it was a parent who pushed her the entire 1.86 miles of the race. Each kid was celebrated as they crossed the finish line, as they came out of the, going into the woods, came out of the woods, and came through the, came through the home stretch. There were 182 participants last year, 100 boys and 82 girls, which was the highest number of participants that we've had to date. Again, all four LCSE schools are represented, and we, we've turned it into a little bit of a competition between each school as well. So the kids are introduced to a scoring system that's common in cross-country meets. The winning school will receive a trophy. The three, the top three finishers in four grades, for grades three, grades four, grades five, will receive a medal as well. Each student will also, each student participating will receive a Big Run t-shirt, an after snack, after-race snack, and we also use an official timing system for them. The students will continue wearing those t-shirts until they outgrow them. Last year, I estimated there were probably 600 people there to, just to observe and to watch and cheer on the kids. So with last year being the first year we ran at Abner Longley Park, too, the Parks Department did a phenomenal job helping us get it ready. And, and it also got 800 people to Abner Longley Park, which I was absolutely thrilled about, too. So the funds that we, we utilize will offset the cost of the t-shirts and the timing system and the awards.
Thank you, Matt. Food and Beverage Committee report?
We met with Matt, and this and everything I'm going to say is really just going to be a repeat of what he just said, because he didn't miss a thing. He's got it all right here, and I've got notes. But as he said, 182 kids participated last year, which was their all-time high with five, 500 to 600 spectators, and there's zero cost to the kids and the spectators. So that's, that's pretty good. And to give each kid a shirt, none of this is, you know, inexpensive at all cost. And they're, him and Shelley put this on, and it's not a school-sanctioned event either. So they have other sponsors, Sports Boosters and With Them Hospital, which are smaller sponsors, but still their sponsors. And so at the Food and Beverage Committee, we, we recommend that we approve this $1,500 request from the Food and Beverage.
We have, I see that's a motion as well?
That motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second from Rob. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Thank you, Matt.
Very much.
Are you done with the microphone tonight, Matt? You good?
I think so.
Okay, all right. I'm just giving you a time. All righty, next item up here is ordinance 2025-08. This is established as a wastewater service rate district for the LEAP District Utility Wastewater District, and this is on first reading. Jeff Jacob.
Good evening, council. Thank you, mayor. I'm here tonight with Ryan Ottinger, Ed Baskel, and Scott Miller from Baker Tilly. I'd like to discuss and introduce ordinance 2025-08. This is, again, a first reading. It would be our hope to have the second reading and public hearing on April 14th at your next meeting. This ordinance, in essence, establishes a wastewater rate and district for the LEAP area. If you recall, this is the same process and very similar ordinance to what we had done for the water LEAP rate district as well. This is simply a corresponding area for wastewater. The ordinance substantively mirrors the existing civil wastewater rate district ordinance, save for the availability fee and the monthly rate distinction, which Scott will discuss in detail in a moment. One of the things that I'd like to make clear for everyone is that the rate that we're talking about this evening does not apply to existing customers within the civil wastewater district. So non-LEAP users, this does not impact their rates at all. Only users within the LEAP district. If you'll note on the exhibit, which you've been supplied with, this is the exact same exhibit, same for, of annexations into the LEAP district. And the ordinance provides that any future annexations that come before you, that petitioner needs to designate with council approval which district will apply, whether that's the civil district or the LEAP district. I also note for you that this comes to you with a unanimous recommendation for approval from the Utility Service Board. I'm happy to answer any questions, but would turn it over to Scott Miller to discuss the rate elements within the ordinance.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, mayor and council. As Jeff said, this is exactly the same process that we went through on the water side. The ordinance, the ordinance that you have in front of you includes not only monthly user rates and charges, but also an availability fee of $5,400 per EDU, based on the cost of the improvements and the capacities that will be available in that area. So as new entities move in and develop out in LEAP, they'll pay that availability fee As you know, there are significant improvements that need to be done to provide service, so the rate incorporates the issuance of bonds to fund improvements out at the LEAP system. The way timing of the improvements is going to work out, we've got a phase one and a phase two that will happen very closely together. So right now, we're planning on a 2025 financing with the state revolving fund of just under $162 million. That will hopefully take place here in the next month or two. And then a year from now or so, we'll have the phase two financing for another $155,000, and that will take care of increasing the size of the existing wastewater treatment facility to provide for the additional flow that will be coming into the LEAP district. So the rates are designed to include the availability fee, but then also recover at least a portion initially of the debt service on those proposed financings. Let me flip forward here. In addition, yeah, go ahead.
You said 155,000? You meant 155 million?
Sorry, did I, if I said thousand, I meant million, yeah. 155,000 would be cheap for what we're doing. In addition to the financing and the projects, we're going to have additional costs of operating the expanded plant. So again, phase one, phase two, we'll have day-to-day operating expenses with the plant for the increased flows that will be coming in and being treated. We'll also have some power that will eventually be incurred as we construct the line down to the Eagle Creek Reservoir for the effluent. And then we'll also have annual replacements and improvements that will need to be made to continue to maintain the system and take care of it into the future. So with all of those different components, we'll have a capital rate, a capital rate associated with the debt service on the financing. That's the first line that you see here. Initially, while we have big customers, two big customers at least coming into LEAP, and they have significant flow, it's still not sufficient initially to take care of all of the debt service. So just like we did on the water side of things, the IEDC will be pledging the IDD revenues that are generated in the LEAP district, as well as the TIF revenues from the city that will be pledged to the repayment of the bonds that will be issued as well. So you see that discount there on the second line, and then we have the rate for the operation, maintenance, and replacement. So the ordinance before you has a total monthly rate of $6.50 per 100 cubic feet. And then, based on the size of meter that any customer has installed, they'll also pay a monthly, monthly base charge, just like your existing wastewater customers do. So that's really the, the extent of the rates. Like I said, $5,400 for the availability fee, $6.50 per 100 cubic feet for the flow, plus a monthly base charge based on, on the water meter size. Financings for the projects will be hopefully in the next month or so, and we'll be back before you with the proposed bond ordinance here very soon, as we work through those, those details and get that document put together. So with that, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Scott, a couple of questions for you first.
Yeah, go ahead.
So does this follow the policy of LEAP paying for LEAP?
It does, yes. Yeah, as Jeff said, this doesn't impact any of your existing customers as far as this financing goes or these rates. So, you know, this is just for customers in LEAP. The financing will be funded, at least initially, mainly through the IDD revenues being generated out there at the site. And then gradually, over time, as additional customers come on and flows increase, then we'll look to transition off those IDD revenues and on to LEAP user rates alone. But two weeks ago now, I think we had a meeting with the Indiana Economic Development Corporation, IEDC, and they confirmed they understand that, at least for the next number of years, those IDD revenues are needed for the water debt and the wastewater debt, so that your civil district customers are protected. So there isn't any, any legal way, really, for civil revenues to be used for that LEAP district, the way we've got the financing structured.
And then how do those rates compare to current civil rates?
Yeah, so the current civil rate, and I'm going to forget off the top of my head here, I think the current civil rate is five something. So they're about 546. So it's about 115%, 120%. It's a little bit greater than the, the existing bottom civil rate.
So it's not, it's not cheaper than the current residential?
Not cheaper than the current rate, no. Yeah.
Further questions for Scott from the council?
The, the new rate is for even residential, if there were residential people out there?
That's true, and that's why we built in that base charge, too, so that we try to keep things as equal as possible. But it would be applicable to any type of development that incur, that occurs in the LEAP district. That's correct.
Are there any expenses that the Lebanon Utilities will have to pay that won't be covered by the IEDC?
Or the, or the rates and charges?
The way things are structured now, no. No, the, the ordinance before you creates a totally separate district, just like we did on water, and the financial statements are set up completely separate. So those dollars will stay there with LEAP, and we'll have the civil district dollars as well.
So when Lebanon updates the plant, they're going to be reimbursed?
Well, the financing that we're going to take out will pay for the upgrade of the plant. So there is some benefit to the existing civil district customers, because unlike the water utility, where we're building mostly new assets, brand-new stuff, this, this is a, expanding the existing facility, along with some other things, especially the effluent line down to the reservoir. But the plant itself is the existing plant and is being expanded. So there is benefit in terms of additional capacity that will be able to be allocated to civil district customers. One of the complicating factors of this, of the wastewater side, is that on, with wastewater, we have an outstanding open-market bond issue right now, that right now has a, a claim on all of the existing revenues of the utility. So as part of all this, we're going to replace that financing with another, or a new SRF financing, so that we can make that carve-out, just like we did on the water. On the water, we had SRF bonds outstanding, and so we're issuing this new debt with SRF. On the wastewater side, we don't have that. So we need to get the existing bondholders out of the way, replace that with SRF, and then they'll be able to agree that we've got this hard-line separation between the two.
With this plant expansion, will it cover the LEAP district fully built out, as it stands now?
No, there's a third phase down the road that would be done if that growth takes place down the road. So we're only doing the first two phases, which I believe take us to 10 million gallons per day. And then there's another, a third phase down the road that could be done once the growth makes that necessary.
Thank you. Further questions? Anything for Ed or for Jeff from the council? Rob, read the ordinance, please.
Thank you, mayor. Council, ordinance 2025-08 is an ordinance establishing, again, the wastewater service rate district and rates and charges for the use and services provided by the Wastewater Works Utility to the LEAP district. Again, the city, and we've seen this before, as both Jeff and Scott indicated, with the water, but owns and operates through its Utility Service Board, a municipal wastewater utility, again, known as Lebanon Utilities. For the purpose of providing safe, reliable, efficient wastewater utility services, that's defined as wastewater work system in around the city. This council, based upon recommendations from the board, periodically creates, evaluates, and adjusts fees and charges to ensure the sufficient revenue to cover the expenses of the utility, including the maintenance and expansion. expansion of the wastewater work system. The Indiana Economic Development Corporation, or the IEDC, has established the LEAP district, which consists of approximately 11,000-plus acres of real property within, approximate to the city. The LEAP district is defined in Exhibits A and B and may be further amended by this council. The city has previously established a wastewater district under the City of Lebanon in Ordinance 2022-23, and that's defined as the Civil Wastewater District. It's determined, again, that the LEAP district has distinct wastewater infrastructure needs and capacity demand and wastewater service costs that necessitate the establishment of a new rate district separate from the Civil Wastewater District. In anticipation of the LEAP district, the city, through the board, approved a water supply agreement, defined as a water supply agreement with the Board of Directors for Utilities of the Department of Public Utilities for the City of Indianapolis, doing businesses, doing business as Citizens Water, that's defined as citizens, to provide this, that citizens will supply the utility with up to 25 million gallons per day of wholesale water services to the city, including the LEAP district. The board has obtained an estimate cost from its engineering advisor to receive and treat the resulting wastewater. The existing rates and charges, charges for services provided by the utility do not provide revenues sufficient to construct and maintain the wastewater work system for the LEAP district. So the board has commissioned an analysis from Baker Tilly, which you heard from Scott Miller, to determine in a reliable and efficient manner the appropriate rates and charges for the LEAP district. And that's all been provided in the Baker Tilly report. Based upon the Baker Tilly report, the board adopted its Resolution 2022-02 recommending the creation of a new wastewater rate district for the LEAP district, and that's defined as the LEAP wastewater district. Pursuant to Indiana law, this council may by ordinance establish just and equitable fees for services rendered by the wastewater utility. The utility has been exempted from the jurisdiction of the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. This ordinance is introduced pursuant to Indiana law, and a hearing, as Jeff Jacob indicated, will be held at the next council meeting. And this council will hold a public hearing. This council finds that the rates and charges described herein are nondiscriminatory, reasonable, and just. This council also finds the rates and charges produce income sufficient to construct and maintain a utility proper in a sound, physical, and financial condition. Therefore, be it resolved, this council finds that a second wastewater rate district is hereby established as the LEAP wastewater district. The boundaries of the LEAP wastewater district are set forth in Exhibits A and B. The existing wastewater rate district governed by Ordinance 2022-23 shall be known as the Civil Wastewater District and generally includes all current connections to the wastewater work system and all property currently within the corporate limits of the city, not set out in Exhibits A and B. The LEAP wastewater district shall also be governed by the City of Lebanon Utilities' General Terms and Conditions of Wastewater Service. All future annexations of property into the corporate limits of the city shall designate which wastewater rate district shall apply. All right, there's several more pages in here. I'm gonna, I know you all have copies, so I'm not gonna go through it. But it talks about the $5,400 per EDU set in here, as well as the connection and inspection fees, the flow rates, the monthly base charges, other non-recurring fees and charges, deposits, other technical requirements and fees. And then, again, just like with other ordinances, this ordinance shall be full force and effect upon its adoption and as required by Indiana law.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Any further discussion, comments from council at this time? Any public comment concerning Ordinance 2025-08? We'll take that, the ordinance is around our first reading, so we'll take that up at our next meeting, which will be April 14th at 7:15 p.m. All right, next item up, Ordinance 2025-09. This is a Spring Creek Plan Unit Development Amendment. This is on first reading. Ben?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Get plugged in here real quick, and I've got a quick presentations to go through to overview the changes here. So it's before you tonight, this is the Spring Creek development that's at 339, the northwest corner of that intersection. This is a project that was previously approved with a Plan Unit Development Ordinance by the council a couple of years ago in 2023. This is a project that has been put on the tarmac, if you will, with a number of other developments due to water availability. So they, they are, had some time to reevaluate, and the builder, Beazer Homes, was looking at the product mix here, and I'll show you here in a little bit what those product, product mixes look like. When they originally proposed this development a couple of years ago, they had two, they had a single-family detached product, which I would call a move-up buyer product. They had a duplex product with, which they, which they would suggest would target more of the first-time homebuyer. And then they had a single-family attached project, or a townhome product that was part of this development. Since that time, Beazer was looking at their product mix and has kind of discovered over the last year and a half a softening in the market for their duplex product. And so what they wanted to do here in this development is essentially replace the duplex product with a detached product. Essentially, you would have a first-time homebuyer detached product now, and then the, still the move-up product that they had proposed previously. So in order to do, make that change, they did have to make some amendments to the previously adopted PUD, or Plan Unit Development Ordinance. And so that is what is before you here tonight, is those amendments. So in addition to making the changes to the standards to accommodate the second detached, single-family product, we also, at the same time, because when this was originally adopted two years ago, it was under the old Unified Development Ordinance. And so their, their PUD referenced standards in the old Unified Development Ordinance. And I thought while we were making the changes to allow the product type, we would also essentially modernize the language in their PUD ordinance, so it referenced our new Unified Development Ordinance, the appropriate sections there. So those are the, essentially the two substantive changes that were made. And so if they just want, they probably just took this down. So just a quick overview, again, this is the site in question. 300 north is to the, to, on the south side boundary. State Road 39 is on the east. CSX Railroad is on the west. So that's the quick overview of the site. Here is the new concept plan. And essentially, what you have here is in this darker orange product that kind of runs around the perimeter, that is the move-up, single-family detached product. And that's essentially very similar to what it was, how it was proposed, and the location it was proposed in a couple of years ago. And where the change is happening is in these, these lots in the center here that's more the yellowish color. This is where we're going from a duplex product to a single-family detached product. And the number of units has changed slightly, but essentially, we have the same number of units as we did before. You're just basically splitting them and putting a setback between the two, what would have been duplex units, now detached units. And what you're seeing here in kind of this reddish color on the southeast, this would be the area set aside for the townhome, part of the development. And then this gray box is actually the commercial part, which, which we don't have any plans for yet, but that would be coming up later on, hopefully this year, maybe into next year. So really, the change in terms of the layout, it really hasn't changed much. The larger, single-family detached project and product is essentially in the same area. The duplex now detached product is essentially in the same area. It was really just making some adjustments to allow for those detached products rather than the attached to duplexes. So just, the other thing we wanted to do when we, when we're looking at this with them is because they are smaller, narrower lots, the homes are actually somewhat narrower too, meaning that the garage becomes a lot more prominent on a home that's on a narrower lot like that. So we wanted to look at some additional architectural requirements in addition to those setbacks to make sure that, again, we're still coming up with an attractive product. So first, I'll just quickly go over the changes. And actually, these numbers are slightly different than this. But in terms of the duplexes, there was a maximum of 130 units, and then that 110 is not right, but the number's on here. I think it's like 118, actually. Forgot to change, yeah, 118 units. So we were actually seeing a slight decrease in the number of units going to the detached product. So it's going from 130 to 118 units. The minimum lot area was 3,500 per unit on the duplexes, now it's 4,500 square feet for the detached product. And then the only other change to the standards you see is on the side yard setback. And that's because, again, when you have a duplex, there's a zero-foot setback on the, on one side because they're attached. Now you're basically taking those, that duplex, those two units and splitting them apart. So you now have five-foot setbacks on both sides of those, of those, those units. So that's really the only substantive change to the standards is to essentially allow for the single-family detached rather than the duplex. But as I mentioned, we did also want to look at some architectural standards to try to dress up the front. So this is, they do have in here a couple of, handful of examples of what these homes will look like. One of the primary things that we wanted to do to make the garage list prominent, rather than having a single 16-foot wide garage door, we wanted to require two single garage doors. So you get a, you break up that, that wide garage door into two single garage doors. And then you also have decorative garage doors and windows in the garage doors. Again, just to kind of break up what would be just kind of the 16-foot slab of a garage door. And then the other thing that we added was they're required to at least have a half-light in the, in the front door. So you'll see at least a 50% glass in that front door. And then the other standards you can see here, they do have a masonry requirement, and then two different material requirements. And they've worked with the builder to make sure that they've, that they also vary up those materials and the colors associated with those materials. So that's what you see reflected in some of these examples here. And I can just kind of scroll through, and there's a few other examples in here. Again, you can kind of see the garage and the front door. And, and again, these were very early concepts, so they don't actually have the half-light as, as it's required in the door, but they would when they're constructing and they finalize these elevations. Just a hand, there's a couple of single, and then here's one of the two-story examples. And just one other two-story example, just kind of, again, showing you some, some of the variations on the floor plans and what they've done with the garage doors, front doors, and the materials on the houses to address some of those architectural standards we wanted to see in these homes. So this, again, as I mentioned, this is an amendment to PUD ordinance. So this is a multi-step process, starting with the Plan Commission, which they reviewed this last Monday evening, and forwarded with a positive recommendation 6-0 to the council. And then the council's responsibility then is to review that PUD ordinance and adopt it. So this, this, what's before you here tonight would be the first reading of that Plan Unit Development Ordinance and the amendments that we just went over. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. If you have anything specific leading to development, there is a representative from Gratteson here that could answer any specific questions you might have about this that I didn't already answer.
Any questions for Ben from the council at this time? So it would be a slight density decrease?
It's a slight decrease. It's essentially the same number, but it's just slightly less, yeah.
Okay. With that, Rob, can you read the ordinance, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Ordinance 2025-09 is the Spring Creek PUD District. It's an ordinance of this council, amending Ordinance 2023-05, the Spring Creek PUD District Ordinance of the City of Lebanon. This council has previously adopted Ordinance 2024-02, which is the City of Lebanon Unified Development Ordinance, or the UDO. The city is subject to the UDO. This council adopted Ordinance 2023-05 on June 12th, 2023, establishing the Spring Creek PUD District and the associated land use development and design standards. Whereas Ben indicated, due to the needs and desires of potential users, tenants of the Spring Creek District, it has become necessary to consider amendments to the Spring Creek PUD District. The City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission considered petition, a petition, Docket 25-1, filed with the commission requesting an amendment to the Spring Creek PUD District Ordinance 2023-05 with regard to the subject real estate described in Exhibit A. The commission forwarded Docket 25-01 after conducting a public hearing on March 17th, 2025, to this council with a favorable recommendation by a vote of six to zero in accordance with Indiana law. The secretary of commission certified that action to this council on March 18th, 2025. And therefore be it resolved, this council finds that Ordinance 2023-05 is hereby repealed and replaced in the attached. Several pages that Ben just went through, I won't go through them all, but it essentially addresses the points that he discussed.
Thank you, Rob. Any further questions, comments from council? Any public comment concerning Ordinance 2025-09 at this time? Okay, we'll take that up for second reading at our next meeting, which will be April 14th at 7:15 p.m. All right, next item on the agenda here is Ordinance 2025-10. This is establishing pedestrian alleyways. Kevin?
Thank you very much. This is really just a, a housekeeping issue. In 2017, 2018, when we reconstructed the square, we effectively closed the alleys that enter into the square on three sides, the north side, the east side, and the west side to vehicular traffic.
South side.
I'm sorry. Did I say west side?
Yep.
North side, east side, south side. We effectively closed those alleys by, by essentially providing barricades or street furnishings that would have blocked you from going through those alleys. And we've seen, and then that project included the activation of the alley on the south side with catenary lighting, decorative paving. And then the Heart of Lebanon did a project on the north side to create the alley that's dedicated to basketball heritage. And there's been some preliminary work that's been done to look at activating the eastern alley. So when we started looking at this, you know, there's a lot of definitions in our ordinances regarding alleys. And most of them are things that you would expect in an alley. It's a place for vehicular traffic. It's a place for storing trash before it would be picked up. And that's obviously not what we want here. So there, there really wasn't a definition of a pedestrian walkway alley that would fit the bill. So Ordinance 25-10 is really to create that pedestrian walkway alley definition and to, I guess, to redefine those three alleys as pedestrian walkways as opposed to alleys. And making those things governed by a set of rules that would be more conducive to what is happening with those alley activation projects. So that's what, that's what this ordinance is, is doing, is just establishing a new definition in our ordinance for pedestrian walkways, and then defining those three alleyways as pedestrian walkways. And it does things like prohibits motorized vehicle use, prohibits storage of, of things like garbage, refuse, trash, recycling materials, prohibits using those alleys for logistics, you know, drop-off, pickup, deliveries, things of that nature. Authorizes signs and markings, authorizes developer, potential activation of those. But any, any use of those alleys would be governed by our Board of Public Works and Safety and would require any, would require necessary permitting and, you know, appropriate conditions attached to those permits if someone were to activate an alley or propose to do something in one of the alleys that are already activated. So with that, if there's no further questions, I'll, I'll turn it over to, to Rob for, for readings. But that is, in a nutshell, Ordinance 2025-10.
I have a quick question.
Yep, please.
The alleyway that's where like the ballet studio and the Samson's, the leather shop there, do they, is there a dumpster in that alley? It's been a while since I've been down there, so I can't remember.
There are dumpsters that, you know, recently, there have been some dumpsters placed there that were previously, I believe, on the north-south alley behind there. And then there's currently, in fact, at the Board of Works meeting earlier tonight, there was permission granted to the ballet company building owner who is going through a massive renovation to, to use that alley for the staging of equipment, the staging of materials for the renovation of that building, which this ordinance would still allow them to do. I would also say that as part of that reconstruction and renovation of the alley building, they have added an entrance on the south side, which is the primary entrance now for the ballet school, which is on the second floor. So again, I think it's important that we, you know, that we put something like this in place that protect, protects, protects those pedestrians, those, those, those children using that alley to gain access to that second floor.
I just want to make sure those businesses there, if there is a dumpster in that alleyway, like for those buildings, if there's another place for them to have it, is just what I mean. I just don't want them to kind of...
Absolutely.
There is a place like behind, or I'm not sure, I'm not super familiar with how they operate all the buildings on the square there on that side. So I just want to make sure they have a, a good place.
I mean, I can, I can tell you, I don't want to speak to how those businesses operate their businesses, but I can tell you that until recently, those dumpsters were all located in different locations.
Okay. Just making sure.
Yeah, they, yeah, they were somewhere else before.
Okay.
And typically, and that's where the waste truck goes up, the north-south alley, not the east-west. Yep.
Okay.
Do these rules ex-
Do these rules extend to any other alleys?
No. And in fact, they do not, they specifically limit the extent to the north-south alley on that eastern side of the square, to the east-west alley on the north side of the square, to the east-west alley on the south side. So they're limited to those adjacent rights of ways.
It's the half blocks and not the intersections at all.
Okay, thanks.
Questions on that? Okay, Rob, can you read it, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2025-10 is an ordinance of this City of Lebanon designating pedestrian walkways in the city. This council previously adopted ordinance 72.05, which outlined parking in alleys and authorized the usage of alleys in the city. This council also adopted previously ordinance number 101.001, which outlined unlawful deposits in alleys and allowable garbage and other natural debris, storage, pickup, and disposal practices in alleys in the city. This council recognizes the importance of promoting pedestrian-friendly spaces within the community and improving access for all residents and visitors. The city has identified certain alleyways within the downtown area as suitable for conversion into pedestrian walkways, which will enhance the local pedestrian experience and support the economic vitality of the area. Therefore, this council finds that the foregoing recitals are incorporated by reference. As of the effective date of this ordinance, Chapter 78, Pedestrian Alleyways of the City Code of Ordinances shall be added in accordance with Exhibit A, which is attached here to and incorporated herewith. The remaining portions of the city code are not affected by this ordinance and shall remain in full force and effect. All prior ordinances or other parts inconsistent with any provision of this ordinance are hereby rescinded to the extent of any inconsistencies. The effective date of this ordinance shall be upon its passage at adoption. And then Exhibit A, as you've seen, just walks through the designation. And Section 78.01 delineates the three areas in A, B, C that this will apply, to the extent that this council would wish to add anything later. Then, as we talked about with Mr. Krulik and the mayor, you know, we could make any amendments that would be needed through that, so.
Questions, final comments from council? Any public comment concerning ordinance 2025-10? Okay, seeing none, we'll take that up at our next meeting, April 14 at 7:15 p.m. Thank you, Kevin. All right, next up, we have a master plan and cost estimate presentation concerning West Side Park. Derek? And V3 as well.
I typically don't carry a pink bucket with me, but there's a special purpose tonight. So before I hand it over to the team for V3, I want to kind of tee it up for them and have a few comments. So I want to first say it's been an absolute pleasure to work with the V3 team. They have produced something that I think we should be proud of. Sarah Evans and Corinne Lucas are here tonight, and their plan provides many unique features for the Lebanon Park system, specific to this site. So exciting stuff you're about to hear. In addition to Sarah and Corinne, the V3 environmental team has been on-site performing the Phase 1 and Phase 2 testing through our EPA Brownfields grant. The Brownfields grant not only paid for all of the environmental testing, it also funded a portion of the master plan. Having the environmental experts and design experts working at the same firm has made the planning seamless. A quick side note, in terms of the environmental testing and cleanup, I've probably said this before, but I definitely just want to highlight it here tonight again. Since 2015, the city has benefited from $850,000 for Brownfield testing at sites and additional $500,000 from IDEM for site cleanup. So it's kind of an unsung hero for the city, but it has done great things over the last decade. Specific to this site, all testing to date has shown no chemical contamination that poses a risk to human health or the environment. We are currently in the process of applying for a site closure from IDEM. They will have an environmental restrictive covenant for us to record at the end, which will likely contain language that groundwater from the site cannot be used for drinking water. And this is a very common covenant that IDEM requests when they close a file at a site. The other thing I want to touch on real quick before I hand it over is the public outreach for this process. The public outreach, I feel like, produced some of the best results for any project that I've been involved with at the city, when we start to engage the community on things that they want to see on a particular project, their thoughts, their feelings. And that was produced by a combination of a few things. An online survey, which produced 481 responses, and two public engagement events. So we went to the people, and I think it made all the difference in the world. We've hosted open houses, we've hosted events at restaurants with free food, and you get crickets that show up for the most part. With the online survey and the two public engagement events, which were the Lebanon Webo football game and a booth at Mischief on Meridian, I feel like we really encapsulated a ton of feedback for this project. So the pink bucket, we can deal with this any way you'd like to, Mayor. During this process, we promised that we are going to draw a name, in this case, it's going to be an email address, from the online survey and award a 2025 Seashore Water Park family pass for their participation. And as a bonus, one time only, because of the fantastic number of participants, we are going to draw a second name for the same style of pass tonight. So we can do that now, we can do it at the end of the presentation, however you want to handle that.
We can do it now, but just walk it up here, I'll grab it.
All right.
And then, no funny business, you know.
What did I say, 481? There are 481 pieces of paper.
Okay. We all have witnesses, right? So. And there's the other one. All right, the first winner is, oh, no, we can't do this one. Seapoor84 at SBC Global. I'm going to veto, sorry Cindy, I'm going to, sorry, that's, can't be a city, former city employee. Calling a veto on that one. I hope we've gotten emails, I know. All right, I have no idea who this one is. All right, this is lor32860@gmail. So lor32860@gmail, you're our first winner. And the second one is pjefowler112233@yahoo.com. So congratulations to lor and pjefowler.
Those are the two winners?
Those are the two winners. Sorry Cindy, again.
So I will hand it over to V3 at this point. One other thing I want to add, after tonight's presentation, I will be taking this back to the Lebanon Parks Board to have them adopt it into their current master plan, so it can be put in there as an addition. So we will do that after the presentation here tonight, which you will see the layout and the cost estimates for developing the site.
Thank you, Derek.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I also have to thank Derek for his leadership on this project. As we get into a process, the client team is definitely a part of the design efforts. And we always find that the most successful projects are when we are a partner on this. And this has definitely been a great process for us. So as Derek mentioned, we have developed what we're calling West Side Park right now, a name to be formally decided on, but it's a little bit easier to say than the Lebanon Park, or Garage Park Master Plan. So throughout this process, as Derek mentioned, we've had touchpoints with the community, really to get their input on what they wanted to see in a new park. This is really a great opportunity to create something from kind of a blank canvas. And so I'm going to see if my mouse will work here. I can scroll in a bit, there we go. As we worked with community and also the park board, as we started to identify the identity for this park, we wanted to create something that was specifically geared toward teens in your community. Many times parks, traditional parks are geared toward younger kids. And so this offers an opportunity to have something fun for older children in your community and teens specifically. So starting down here along Lafayette Avenue, this is identified for a future trail. So we've incorporated that here along this perimeter here. And then thinking about adding parking infrastructure, we have a parking lot that will provide 18 parking spaces plus two ADA compliance spaces here, so a total of 20 spaces within the parking lot. And then this offers a drop-off area as well, so easy ingress and egress through this one-way parking lot here. And then thinking about connectivity into the park, we've provided a walkway that will allow trail users to get into the park without having to walk through a parking lot. Then, again, at this, along Lafayette Avenue, we have identified a skate park down here. The exact features of a skate park are yet to be determined. I should step back a little bit. We're still in the master plan process of the design here, so really, we're starting high level to identify what improvements could be placed on the site and then how they would be arranged. As we get into further definition of the design, that's where we would really start to identify what types of elements would be in a skate park, working with user groups, that sort of thing, to really define those amenities. But what we've done is identified skate parks in other areas to say something could, of this square footage, could fit in the park and provide a good number of skate park amenities here. We've also provided some seating around the skate park so that, you know, kids who aren't using the skate park at that time could sit, you know, something akin to this image here in the lower right-hand corner, you know, a place for kids to hang out in a positive space. As we continue to move further into the park, you'll notice there's a perimeter trail along and that winds all the way around the park. This would include benches that you'll see placed along the trail, places for people to pause, take a break, chat with friends, as well as lighting that would be consistent with your trail standards. And then also coming off of that parking lot, we've placed a couple of kind of priority amenities, I would say, in terms of infrastructure and architecture. So we have a restroom building here that allows for easy maintenance right off of the parking lot, as well as easy access. And then a large group shelter. And we've got some photos here from other architectural elements that are, that match the standards in your overall park system. This central feature here then, kind of, that sits between the large group shelter and the restroom, is a multi-use plaza with a splash pad. And we have some images here to show what that amenity could look like. The thought here is that it would be a hardscape area with some water jets, so maybe a different type of splash pad than you're used to seeing without a lot of features. But that provides you with the flexibility of setting that space up for farmer's market or small community gatherings when it's not being utilized as a splash pad. And again, thinking about creating unique destinations through this park, that's different from the rest of your system. As further into the site, we have our, what I would call our play, a more active area here. So we've got tunnels and mounds, play zone here, which this is envisioned to be a synthetic turf mound with different climbing elements. Let me move to some of those images up here. Different climbing elements for kids to race up and down the hill, as well as tunnels to climb through that are similar to what's being shown here in this image. This is all envisioned to be shaded with some nice shade trees around there to create a seating promenade that would include different benches and picnic tables, you know, so that caregivers can watch their children as they play in this zone here, have a place to, you know, grab some lunch or even do some work from that area. And then in this light blue area winding around here, we've got an obstacle course and then some bouldering elements here. And again, this is really geared toward some of the older kids and teens that need to be physically challenged in terms of play experiences. And so that's why we've selected this obstacle course and these bouldering walls. And we've got some images there. And again, you know, there's a variety of play elements that are out there, and we haven't necessarily selected one. We're showing some examples of what that can look like, either more of a natural type of rock feature or this kind of bouldering wall that you might see in a bouldering gym, because we feel like that's another step in the process, a detail that could be decided in the next phase of development there. But really, just giving you some good ideas of what could happen and that you have the space to do that. We're also thinking about bench seating throughout the park so that, again, folks who are coming to use the trail or the play zone have ample opportunities to sit and rest and have eyes on their children. Any questions then on this conceptual master plan?
Can you put the picture back up? I'm just thinking, trail lighting around the trail, I don't see anything identified for basically lighting in the park anywhere, just in case. Or if kids want to come, you know, early evening or something, do a little skating or whatever. I know we have to be sensitive with the neighbors on how much lighting and so forth, but I just wonder, and I didn't see like any identification where lighting might go around that trail.
Yeah, so these kind of lighted areas here, you'll see some here in the parking lot as well, like they've got this yellow glow to them.
Okay.
Those indicate the areas that we would anticipate for lighting, because, you know, again, we want to make this a safe place. Recognizing your comment too about, yes, we do have some adjacent neighbors here, especially residences along this area, that we want to be mindful of. And so we've created landscape buffers, really along the edges of the park here, just to provide some buffering from the adjacent uses.
Yeah, we do, you know, our parks do close at night, at dusk, right? So there is kind of a balance of we want to keep it where there's enough lighting to keep it safe and certainly if there's any, you know, keep down any nefarious activities, but also not also encourage people to hang out there at night either, right? There's got to be kind of a balance between the two, but yeah. And this is just the master plan, so it's not certainly like this is where every light pole will go. We're still, that's kind of being formed as well.
Did you say this closes at night? It's not 24/7?
Yeah, same with all of our other parks, they're closed at night, yep.
Do you anticipate a type of like softer flooring or anything where that blue on the map or on the obstacle course, or do you think that'd be like concrete? I know it's high level, but I'm just curious if you said that maybe turf on the other portion, so just as curious if you guys had spoke about flooring there in the blue section?
Yeah, definitely. So even though we are at a master plan level, as we dig into the costing, we are taking some assumptions in terms of like what the design would be. And that's really based upon, you know, kind of best practices and other standards used in park design. And for these blue areas, we are anticipating a synthetic surface. So a lot of times, these are poured in place rubberized safety surfacing that would provide the cushioning layer underneath that you would need for fall zones in these areas. Again, to give you all a tool that anticipates costs, because those types of surfaces are, you know, they're more expensive than some other place surfaces, so just a good planning tool there.
It'd be similar to what we have at the current splash pad, like where that is.
Perfect.
Yep. Senator?
Yeah, the splash pad that I saw there on the picture, is that concrete?
Yeah, that one is. And when you, other communities that have these kind of, I'll call it featureless splash pads, that are more like water jet type features, because it's a multi-use plaza for other things too, it is a concrete or pavers that are there with kind of the jets embedded in them, but they're more, I guess there's a. a texture term, so it's not slippery, right? So, there's still traction with them. But, obviously, if you're running, so it is still concrete, but it's a different type of, it's not, it doesn't get that slippery when it's wet. Explain it, okay?
No, nothing to add to that.
Do you have any kind of a cost estimate?
We do, yes. So, we have put together, oops, excuse me. We have put together a cost estimate for all of these areas, again, taking some assumptions in terms of the finishes that would be utilized in this park. The, I should have noted, too, that the dark gray for the trail and the parking lot, we're assuming is an asphalt, whereas the light beige color throughout here for the rest of the surfaces is anticipated to be a concrete. As we have put together this estimate, the overall construction costs are at about $8.7 million. And then, anticipating design and permitting fees that would come with that, we're about at a $10 million overall cost for the project. One of the, that does include a contingency. So, again, at a master plan level, we typically will include a 30% contingency because some of those details and decisions haven't been made. So, that, again, allows you some cushion to make those decisions as you get further into the design process. And then, as we would anticipate, you know, if this doesn't move forward into funding immediately, we would recommend a 5% to 6% in addition to that to plan for inflation. So, for future implementation, you know, these are 2025 costs. So, as inflation goes, we would recommend somewhere in that 5% to 6% to add on for additional years for implementation.
Does your estimate include plantings and stuff like that?
It does.
Trees and stuff?
Yes, yes. We've broken it down into your contractor bonds and your general overhead, your erosion control that would be needed, utilities that would be anticipated. Like, right now, we're anticipating you need to pull in water, sanitary. And then, we're assuming stormwater then would be handled through underground systems. So, it breaks down all of these kind of high-level categories for you, the architecture, the pavement, plantings, all of that into the full estimate.
Are there any grants available for any type new park programs like this that we could apply for?
Yes, definitely. There's a number of grants out there. You know, the one that's coming most to mind right now is the LWCF. So, that's the Land and Water Conservation Fund. The great thing is that as a park board, you all, your community has an adopted park master plan. This is part of that. And Derek was mentioning that he's going to take this back to the park board for implementation into your overall planning process. There are some caveats to that in terms of what their requirements are, like, they require half a mile of trail to be implemented as part of a design. I know, right now, we're just over a quarter mile, I believe. I'm going to look at Corinne. Is that correct? Okay, that's, yeah. So, we're at a quarter mile for the overall perimeter trail. But, that doesn't account for the, you know, some of these interior spaces as well. And so, again, that gives you some wiggle room, because a lot of times, master plans, they continue to evolve throughout the design process. But, this really gives you a good foundation to build from and to apply for grants.
Could you talk about the features that were included? Certainly, the skate park, you know, there are people that like that or don't like that, right? But, like, the features that were included, how did we, how did we kind of target those? Like, how were those kind of decided how they were included?
Oh, yeah. So, initially, we had identified a much more robust program, I would say, in here. And as we analyzed the site. But, really, it was through all of that community engagement that Derek mentioned before. It was through the survey responses. So, we dug into that, analyzed, you know, what those results were telling us. There was high support for a skate park. And I would like to say, too, that the football game, I feel like, was a really great step to talk with kids in your community, because a lot of times, your respondents on public surveys are middle-aged to older adults. And this gave us a really great opportunity to talk to folks who are going to be most interested in what this park is going to recommend, or what is going to offer them, and just to get to know your community better. So, it was really wonderful. But, it was really through the direct feedback that we got from community, from analyzing those survey responses, and then working the process with your park board.
Is there enough parking for that? I'm just, off the top of my head, thinking we've got a shelter facility and if it's rented out or something for an event, and then you've got other kids there and parents there with their kids playing through the water park. I'm just kind of concerned, is there enough parking?
Yeah. You know, parking is always kind of one of those areas. Do we have enough? Do we have too much? You know, I think we would continue to analyze the number of people at each of these spaces in one time. But, it's sort of one of those give and takes of, like, how much, how much infrastructure do we really, or how much of the parkland do we really eat up with some of that infrastructure versus are we, are we going to have this at full capacity at all times? And so, it continues to be part of the analysis through the design process.
I would also say, too, part of, you know, this is obviously right along Lafayette Avenue. It's a pretty accessible area. Part of the goal, too, is to make this, I mean, it's not going to be as large, certainly, as Memorial or Admiral Longley Park. And so, connecting it with the trails is important to it. And so, part of it is to make it a, almost like a neighborhood park where you can access it easily with, by walking there or biking there or, you know, walking with your kids there. So, that's kind of the trade-off is that if you know parking is going to be tight, you maybe make that quarter-mile walk to get to the park to then go play or something like that. So, that's kind of the, that's part of the thought, too. Other questions at this time? Yeah, there's no action required. Again, we wanted, you guys knew we were kind of working on this. We wanted to kind of lay it out to you guys. I did mention that we included the skate park, you know, we've talked about this past, John. I know you have thoughts on skate parks sometimes, but we put it towards the front, highly visible, easy for our police to go by and have eyes on that, keep that safe. But, also put it at the front. It's not kind of tucked back in the way and have some bad things happening back there, too. So, have good eyes on it up front as well. So, again, I appreciate the process with V3. They've been great to work with, really innovative, I think, on some of their concepts they come up with. And frankly, used a pretty unique parcel, I think it's fair to say. Came up with kind of a great kind of layout for us, I thought, so.
We have no idea what our costs are going to be to get it ready, though. That's not part of this cost, is it?
Derek, you could touch on that, actually.
Estimate to?
Yeah, I think Kelly sent out the cost estimate breakdown to you prior to the meeting Friday, maybe. If not, I'll follow back up and then send that to you again. But, there are demolition costs, and everything is built into that from what you see today to turn it into this park. So, yeah, it's all built in there.
And I would say, I think there's a couple of different options. Certainly, you brought up the grants. That's something we could explore. You know, I think there's other funding mechanisms that we could look at doing that. Certainly, we haven't, obviously, we built Stone Eater. That was kind of a unique scenario with the landfill, right? But, we've never really built an infill city park before, certainly in recent times. So, it's kind of a new undertaking for us. And so, we'll kind of, you know, if we like the kind of the concept, we can kind of keep pushing and kind of can put some of those options together for you guys if you want to continue exploring how we move forward with this park, so.
And in addition to that, I think, I think this can be phased as well. When you start talking about the layout of the park, perimeter trail, skate park, come back in, do the restrooms and the shelter and splash pad, you know, build your way to the back of the site or slice it any number of ways. I don't think it has to be, you know, bitten off in one bite. So, I think there's definitely ways we can make this happen over time.
Just want to say, I'm really excited to have a park on that area. I grew up over Off-Wit Road, and I would ride my bike on all those roads that didn't have sidewalks yet, all the way to Admiral Longley to swim and to hang out with friends and stuff. So, I definitely can see the growth. We have sidewalks now and now potentially a new park over there. So, I think it's a really good thing for the community, and I definitely see people using it, so.
I 100% agree with that. These conversations even go back, when you start talking about active living, to the original bicycle and pedestrian master plan and the challenge that the railroad creates for the division of the east and west side. Nothing to do with demographics, nothing to do with anything, but it's simply a man-made feature that makes it very difficult. There's only a couple of access points to get through that. So, to give the community an easier amenity to get to on the west side of the tracks, I think is fabulous.
Final thoughts, comments? Again, no actions required tonight. This will go to the park board. This will be their thing to adopt. But, certainly, as we need, if we want to talk about funding, getting financing, and things like that, those will be discussions. They'll come before you guys, obviously, as well, too. So, unless there's any public comment concerning the West Side Park master plan. Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All righty. Next item up here is Resolution 2025-06. This is a disappropriation concerning regional detention. Kevin?
Well, thankfully, there are just three more items on the agenda, and we're going to reduce that down to one.
Well, I have one more after you.
Okay. Well, sorry. So, but, the only resolution regarding additional appropriation that's ready to move forward tonight is the first one on regional detention. The other two, one was an additional appropriation for Stone Eater. Don't worry, I'm not asking for more money on Stone Eater. We're getting a donation, and we need to be able to spend that donation, which will primarily go to park maintenance and operations and some ongoing, ongoing environmental reporting. And then, the fire station one was just, it did not meet the notice requirement. So, we'll have to do that at the next meeting. So, to the one at hand, 2025-06, additional appropriation for regional detention. Essentially, this is, this is an appropriation of money that we already have collected. So, we have a fund that we, over the years, have collected regional detention fees, and that fund is there to hold these monies. And now that we are moving forward with the next phase of design of the regional detention facility, we just need to allocate that money. So, that money is in a fund. We need to appropriate that fund so that we can spend that money on design and potentially construction. But, actually, the goal is to fully design and permit that project. And with some of the other projects, La Leep, State Road 32, 200 West, US 52 and I-65, there are a lot of projects that need dirt. So, I'd like to be able to have a great borrow site for us to offer up to those projects that could help us significantly, if not completely, defray our construction costs. So, again, I'm just asking for an additional appropriation of money already collected. These are user fees that were collected for regional detention, to allocate those into this year's budget so that we can move forward with the design and permitting of that detention facility.
So, essentially, the long story short, we're using the fees we've collected to engineer and design the ponds so that when people need dirt locally for local projects, they can come and build our pond for us.
Exactly.
Yeah. Sally, a plan?
Do we know what in that fund right now?
$307,017.69. I'm actually asking you to allocate the entire amount. We'll only use what's needed for design and if we get into any, any construction. Again, I really hope someone else is building this for us, but inevitably, there may be some expenses that we would have.
Did you send that resolution out?
I did not have the draft resolution to send. All I had was the notice that went out on that.
Well, I mean, so, it's one of our additional, so Tanya can read it, but it's, we had to put in paper all that stuff, too, but.
I'm just guessing, but Kelsey, I, and Sheri, we're all three at conference last week.
There was a lot tonight, yeah.
I'm not sure if this, right.
Yeah, we may, we may have missed it. But, again, it was, it was properly noticed in the paper, though. So, we're, so, but again, with these, it's always, you've seen additional appropriation requests, right? It's not very, yeah, so.
What's the title of the fund? Do we have that?
What?
What's the title of the fund?
Mm-hmm. It's Fund 6612 Retention Pond Fund.
Okay. Retention Pond Fund.
Yep. It's pretty specific what it is, so.
Again, these are monies that you've put into there over the years. These are fees collected from industrial park developers.
Right. And all you want to do is really have availability to use them.
Yeah, I just, I can't use the fund without an appropriation.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't put in the budget.
Budget for it, yes.
Yeah, Tanya, you mind reading it, please, the grant?
Resolution 2025-06, whereas the City of Lebanon is duly formed as a municipal corporation within the state, it is the duty and responsibility of the council to maintain fiscal integrity of the finances. At times, it becomes necessary to appropriate additional funds, which it has at this point, had been determined it's now necessary to appropriate more money. And whereas all additional appropriations require a public hearing, which we will do, of the council who has served proper notice, be it resolved by an adopted by the city council, Resolution 2025-06, in the amount of $307,017.69 to come out of Fund 6612 Retention Pond Fund.
Thank you, Tanya. Questions on the reading of the resolution?
No.
Okay, there is a public hearing required for this resolution. So, this time, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2025-06. If you need to public comment, please come forward, station name for the record, and key comments for three minutes if possible. Seeing no sudden movements, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2025-06. Further discussion, comments from council?
Make a motion, we approve Resolution 2025-06.
A motion to?
And take the money from the regional detention. I need to give you the amount.
Because it's already, that's what's in the resolution. Yep, we're good. So, we have a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from John. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Does it post? All right, that is approved. Thank you, council. All right. And as Kevin mentioned, we are tabling Resolution 2025-07 and 2025-08 for our next meeting. So, those are, we have those are properly noticed. So, do I have a motion to table items I and J?
Sort of move.
Motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Sandra. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Does it post? All right, those are tabled. And then, the one item I mentioned that's not on your agenda, if you'd excuse me, this, we, there was a little bit of confusion on whether it should be on Board of Works or City Council. So, by the time it all went out, it ended up on the wrong agenda. But, long story short, this, I had a meeting a few weeks ago. This is kind of in light of how do we, you know, we've, as a council, we've talked about how do we address street lighting in our community, and how do we work to have more street lighting where it's needed, and frankly, what are ways to approach that project? And so, there, I had this meeting with an individual that talked about what are called energy savings contracts, which is frankly, kind of a different way of procurement for these and cost savings. Essentially, when you transition from one type of street light to another, there's realized, there's savings found there, and there's avenues in state code that allow us to use these energy savings contracts to fund capital projects for street lighting, such as. So, under that statute, though, it has a different procedure of how that is issued. And so, there's what's called, you issue what's called a RFPQ, or Request for Proposal and Qualifications. And so, essentially, what I'm looking for tonight is simply a motion that authorizes, I guess, the mayor to issue a RFPQ for these energy savings contracts. And then, once we have that process, there's the qualified companies will submit proposals that will allow them to propose these cost-saving projects to the city. And then, the city council will then, or sorry, then it will allow the Board of Works to then select that company, and then they would then move forward and then, but any of the financial stuff would actually still require city council approval. So, this is, it's kind of like authorizing us to go seek a bid, like we do at the Board of Works. But, because it's an energy savings contract, it does require the city council to be the ones that authorizes the mayor to go seek those RFPQs for this, if that makes sense to everybody.
And what kind of lighting is this for?
It'd be for street lighting.
Okay. So, is this for a particular project? Is this for the overall city overall?
So, it would be for the city overall. So, the way it would work with these, with RFPQ, essentially, we would select the eligible firm first, right? So, we'd solicit people that are qualified to do these energy savings contracts. And then, once we had a firm selected, that we would select the Board of Works, we would then enter into, go work with that con, to work with that provider. then enter into, go work with that con, to work with that provider to then help us do a full city kind of analysis of our street lighting system and then identify the key areas of where we want to see those improvements made. So there would be kind of a planning effort as part of the, again, identifying your current assets, kind of getting the full scope of where the areas we want to address are, and then using, kind of coming up with the, kind of what the financial plan looks like of then how we start tackling that project.
Okay, I'm just gonna, I don't think it's a bad idea, but I'm just gonna ask that, have we talked to utilities about this? And the reason I ask is that years ago, we went through the same thing years ago to change all the street lighting to LED lighting.
Mm-hmm.
To make them, you know, cheaper and stuff like that. And that's about the same thing you're talking about right now. So I'm just, I'm just wondering, have we already done that and are we duplicating something we've already done?
Yeah.
And is it necessary? And I guess, you know, I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm just saying, I don't want us to go through something that we've already done.
No, I totally get it. So I would say there, we, the, whoever we end up selecting, which again, we don't know who that is because they still have to submit on the RFPQ, they would essentially work with our utilities to help us get the scope, right? They're going to work with our provider, our utilities that understand where all of our poles are, you know, what are the age of the the lights, like all those types of things, right? So, you know, is it Cobra Light, right, or the ones like the downtown, right? So kind of, you know, that that planning effort is kind of that first step, right? So that's kind of engagement. And then there is that process where we determine, you know, are there cost savings? Because there have been advancements in LED technology even since the last 10 years of, there are still cost savings. Maybe it's not as high as if it was the old sulfur bulbs, but there are still probably cost savings to to do that. So it's, it's not just the, there, there is, it, doing the study, though, doesn't cost us unless we move, unless you don't move forward with it, right? So there's still, it's still valuable information for us to get the, essentially, the plan in place of how we would implement this citywide.
I mean, I, being we're paying for the street lighting anyways.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
And, you know, it's probably something we ought to probably look at.
It's.
I mean, it's not going to really cost us anything, I've tried.
Correct.
Get the study and then go from there.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, right, whoever will be submitting on the RFPQ wants to help us find ways to to put more streetlights in, right? So they're going to be working with us to figure out the best way to do that. But as part of that, the planning effort, they kind of do on their dime to help us get to where they can then help us solve the problem.
Didn't we also do a, do a bond here at the end of the year for this year?
We did, yes.
For the street lighting?
We did.
That we were wanting to try to look at doing in the, uh, Clear Park off the avenue down there.
That is, correct. So that, that's part of where kind of the, the.
I kind of thought that was.
Yeah, so, yep, that's kind of the, that's kind of the goal. But I, but I realized as we did that, I want to make sure we had a comprehensive plan for the whole city, right? And and make sure that where we start is the right place to start and, you know, obviously, we can get better cost efficiencies if we have a bigger project altogether, right? And so, and so some of that, they will, when you, when you select a provider like this, they then are the ones that hold the contracts and they can kind of work to figure out who who the best person is to provide the the best price for everything to do with it, so.
You opened the can of worms about street lighting.
That's fine.
And we'll make the comment, and I think I've reached out to Kevin a couple of times about trying to get a, a, figure out whether it's Kevin or Jason or who's in charge of the street lighting, that we've got, I don't know how many, four to six poles that are missing, and all I'm seeing is wires sticking up out of the ground. I'm thinking, we need to, we need to get those poles back and we don't have an inventory of poles. And that's something we, if we're going to be responsible for buying the poles and we need to, we need to try to think, and we need a budget somewhere down the line every year that we're going to keep X, one or two poles of each design, so we have those decorating poles here, in case one goes down, we've got the availability to put, replace them.
And I would say, and that's part of what this will help us do, right? It helps us identify, you know, our current assets, right? And then also future assets, right? And frankly, help us coordinate all these together, right? To make sure that, you know, we do have a lay-down yard and stock in place when one gets hit. You know, as it's working through insurance, we've already have one put back up and we get, can refurbish that too. So that's, that's kind of, this is, as a way to kind of deliver this larger project for trying to do these kind of one-offs, right? That's why I'm having this larger RFPQ is the way to kind of help us stress that, if that makes sense.
I think I find us a place to save money, I'm fine.
That's the goal. That's the goal. Any other questions or concerns?
I, I got one other question for, for you and Kevin, and you guys may know, whatever, but I'm, I'm curious to know when, what the schedule is for NDOT to resurface State Road 39 and fix all the curbs and gutters that are bad, going from Camp Street all the way clear out to the end of curbs and gutters. And the other thing I think we need to consider also is a street light at the corner where Big O Tire is there. It is dark at that intersection at night, when you're coming out of that restaurant right there.
Yep.
It is dark. And they need, we need to talk to utilities about footing a street light here.
Well, the streetlights on 39 would be, would be NDOT, correct? It gets murky, doesn't it?
It does get murky. I, I'm, I'm not for sure. We can, we can do things in NDOT right of way, like wayfinding signage, like street signage. The stop signs have to be controlled by them. We control the sidewalks and the maintenance of the sidewalk, but anything we do to sidewalks or signs or lights have to be permitted. And it has to be constructed in a certain way. As, as you know, it has to be break-off facilities and things of that nature.
I bet those are ours.
I'm, I'm pretty sure all streetlights on 39 and 32 hour, are, are ours. I'm not sure how we add to those, what that process is. We just haven't done it outside of any, any project that's, that's included lighting, So we, the council, you, you pay a monthly fee, five dollars, I think, per month, per li, five dollars and something.
Eight.
Oh, is it eight?
Eight.
Okay, you pay a monthly fee per light, per month, for every street light in the So that covers the maintenance, but I will say it doesn't cover replacement if a pole is ran over. So what Dick's referring to, the four to six lights, those are lights on Indianapolis Avenue, one on West Main Street that have been hit, and the fees that we're paying utilities doesn't cover them buying a new fixture. So we have to find a way to buy a new fixture and, and then, and then they will install it for us. There's also some issues with the, the foundations on Indianapolis Avenue. I've discovered when they were, when those poles were hit, the foundations were damaged, so that's something a little outside the purview of our, our, our people at Lebanon Utilities to, to fix. So we have, as someone mentioned earlier, there's a bond that was issued late last year for lighting, so we're, that's one of the things on the list is to fix those four to six poles that have been damaged and not replaced. And now to look at an overall comprehensive citywide program of where lighting is most needed and make those educated decisions on how we move forward. We have on some of the other projects, just one other side note, like the, the square, like Meridian Streets, we have added lighting to those that is not part of that flat rate fee we pay. Those are separate circuits that are metered and then we pay the electrical bill on that, which at the time was cheaper because they didn't have an LED rate that they were charging us. It was a flat rate regardless of what type of fixture. And those don't use much, the LEDs use far less electricity, which may be a conversation as part of the study on how we're, how we're going about executing the plan.
To your point of them completely rebuilding or redoing 39, I haven't heard anything at all. There's, there was talk of them doing a resurface of it.
It is a, it is a project that has been put forth, I think, a number of times by NDOT in their internal call for projects. Last year, it got denied. I'm not sure this year if, where it's at. But just like, you know, our local rural call projects that we put forth, those projects take five years to develop before they would execute. So I can say pretty confidently, all we're going to get on 39 between now and five years would be patching as it comes up, but not any, not extensive.
You know, I know, but it seems like the curbs along 39, especially from Camp Street North, are just getting really bad.
Mm-hmm. And you remember, like, three years ago, they cut out bad spots and redid them. So every spot, they cut out a bad spot. Now we have two bad spots.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So. Not, I got a little off-topic there, right? So essentially, though, what I do need from council, though, is a motion to authorize the mayor to seek RFPQs for energy savings contracts. Is that correct?
Guaranteed savings.
Guaranteed savings contract that would be then selected by the Board of Works.
I'll make a motion, will you approve an RFP request?
R, RFPQ.
RFP request?
RF, RFPQ.
RFPQ.
There you go.
Request for energy savings.
Okay. And then authorize the, the Board of Works to select.
Authorize Board of Works to move forward.
There we go, sorry. We have motions there, a second?
Second.
Second from Sierra, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Does it post? All right, we'll report back on how that goes, so. All right, that concludes what I have for new business. Anything from council?
I have one thing.
Yeah.
The Food and Beverage Committee.
Yes.
We, is, are there any old guidelines or anything? And we did another thing about that. We talked about it when we were doing the budgets last year, and we were talking, we thought that we were thinking about increasing that amount to 2,000 from 1,500, but nobody, none of us could really say, yes, we did, or no, we didn't. So we need a little bit of guidance here or something set in stone for all of us so we can do a little better.
Yeah, so.
We didn't increase it.
Well, so we've, in the past, we've had a proposal from my communications, Community Development Department, Joe, kind of came up with like, kind of a score sheet, so to speak, or a way to have a process application for you guys to handle those requests. That wasn't ever adopted by the council, but if, if that's something you guys want, we can bring that forward back to you. Really, there, there aren't any formal processes in place for the Food and Beverage Committee, obviously because it has to be approved by the whole council regardless. You know, the Food and Beverage Committee doesn't have any authority to kind of just approve that themselves, so they're kind of served as kind of a vetting for that, but we could, we could more formalize that if you guys wanted to. But the, kind of the, there's nothing in ordinance or resolution that sets it, it can only be this amount. Typically, right, though, we do see when it, because a larger amount or amount requested by the city, that it comes to the full, it does kind of just go through the committee. But that's kind of how, how that all works, hasn't, it's kind of been more tradition than formally defined. So if we want to formally define that, we can, but that's kind of on your guys' call, so.
I think we first, you know, the council, we decided to. Here, I think what Sandy's trying to say is.
We could do 10 people, 1,500.
10 people, 1,500, which, again.
At the end of the day, you're, you're the, you're the fiscal body, right? So if you choose you want to do, yeah, if you want to do, but.
Have to do the whole 2,000 for everybody to ask.
Correct, yeah. You don't, and you could do 2,500 if you wanted to, right? I mean, we, we now too, at a Food, at a point of Food and Beverage, right, we're actually taking in more in a, every month than, or in a year than what's budgeted, right? So in a lot of years, third years, we don't spend the full Food and Beverage either, right? So it's.
So if we, if we go over our 1,500 right now.
Are you saying you want to make it where the Food and Beverage Committee just meets and assigns the money themselves? So they, they always have to come back regardless?
They always have to come back, but right now, it's like, if we say 1,500, then you guys take our rec.
Right, yeah, that's basically how it works.
2,000, you're not going to take our recommendation, you're going to go, and they're going to have to.
I think as a committee, or as a council.
Hey, for the 2,000, right? If we leave it at 15, what I'm saying.
Oh, are those, mic's not working?
It did.
Okay. I think some of the things.
That mic's not working, yeah. Sierra, yours working?
Mine's working here.
John's got a dead mic.
The purpose for that.
I'm not.
No, you're all right.
This next time, I don't care.
I think in the past, we've had some groups come up and ask for an observant amount of money that as a committee, we said, no, we can't do that. That's something we need to do as a council. And it's just like tonight when John came up for the, the fireworks. That's something above and beyond what our committee can do. So we recommend when they come up with a dollar amount like that, they come in front of the full council. It's the nonprofits, the organizations like Shalom House and things like that that feed our community, help feed our community, that we try to make the donations to them to keep that money going, keep the food going to our community as much as possible.
Yeah, which again, I, I think whatever the, if we want to put something in place, we can, we can work with you to do that. I mean, at some level, right, if the Food and Beverage Committee wants to recommend $3,000, right, again, it's, it's.
I agree.
It's the Food and Beverage Committee's call, right? And, and then it's, and it's the city council's decision to vote on it. It's not, it's nothing coming from me or the city saying you can only do that. I mean, it's, it's really, if you guys hear them out and say, hey, you know, this really, they've never really asked before and this is a, this is need, this is justified, I mean, you could go above that if you wanted to.
I think we're looking at the cost of living keeps going up every so many years, so at, the first time it was $1,000 and it was like, well, that didn't touch anything very much. It helped, but it doesn't solve the problems or help the problems. Then we went to 1,500 and we've been there for several years, and I think now we're trying to raise just a little bit more to cover that.
Again, I.
I think as a council, if we agree to that, we can, we can move on.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I think it's, I, I kind of would say it's kind of the Food and Beverage Committee's discretion, right? And that's kind of, you guys are doing your work in the committee, hearing them, vetting them, hey, this is justified and this is our recommendation, yeah. So and if it's, if it's less than $1,500, recommend that, you know, it's kind of, that's what.
If we do give out a little more, like 2,000, maybe, and then we run short on that 15,000.
We can move it between lines. We have, we have half a million dollars budgeted in Food and Beverage, so.
We're good. We don't need anything else. We're good.
Yep.
Thank you.
So don't need anything then? You're all good?
We're good.
Okay, cool. All right, any further announcements, discussion?
Just one announcement. The Lebanon Kiwanis Club 71st Annual Pancake Supper is coming up April the 10th. I'm out of tickets, but you can buy them at the door or from Matt Wilson.
So I asked, Mike, and you had one more chance to plug it, so there we go. With that.
I thought we were doing away with announcements.
No. All right, with that, we're going to retain a motion concerning the claims.
I make a motion, we pay the claims.
Motion to pay the claims, there a second?
Second.
Second from Rob, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Does it post? All right, claims are approved, and we're going to retain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned from Dick, is there a second?
Yeah.
Second from Sierra, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Does it post? Our next city council meeting will be April 14th at 7:15 PM. We are adjourned.
Forgot about it. I wouldn't if I remembered it.